Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn Rye, Chair of the School Board of Virginia Beach. In accordance with the schedule of school board meetings amended and approved by the school board at their January 25th, 2021 regular meeting and pursuant to Bylaw 146 in Virginia Code 2.2-3707, I hereby call this special meeting to order at 5:00 PM on this first day of March 2022 in the school board chambers in the school administration building number six at the municipal center 2512 George Mason Drive, Virginia Beach 23456. The purpose of this special meeting is twofold. One, a public hearing for citizens to express their views on the proposed school operating budget fiscal year 2022-23 and capital improvement program for fiscal year 2022-23 through 2027-28. And two, fiscal year, a discussion by, excuse me, a discussion by the school board and school administration with respect to the school proposed operating budget and capital improvement program referenced above. It's determined physical distancing will be used in school board chambers as a health mitigation strategy. We welcome those who are here with us in person today and our viewing and listening public as well, because as always, the public is able to observe this meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you take the verbal role of members present?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in school board chambers is Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you, and it was shared with me that Ms. Owens is en route and Mrs. Manning is out due to a health matter. So with that, would everyone present please join me in a moment of silence? Please stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
That leads us to the adoption of the agenda portion of the meeting. Are there any modifications, colleagues? Mrs. Holtz? Okay, so with that, we'll take a motion to approve, Mrs. Holtz, and a second, Mrs. Riggs. Okay, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have nine ayes, the motion passed.
Thank you. So that leads us now to the public hearing portion of the meeting. This is a public hearing for citizens to express their views on the proposed fiscal year 22-23 proposed operating budget and the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2020, for the fiscal years 2022-23 through 2027-28. We'll now begin with those who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. As a reminder, each citizen has three minutes to present, and we again ask that you focus your remarks on the budget. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please introduce our first speaker?
Thank you. Our first speaker will be Dan Chang.
And welcome.
Hi, Ms. Rye, Ms. Melnick. I'm going to speak on the funding for the ESL program as an American taxpaying citizen who is a minority who does not claim any special status. My parents legally immigrated to the United States and entered into the public school system with English as their second language. I fully understand integrating into a new country with English as a second language from my parents' experiences. Senate Bill 156, which would have increased requirements for ESL programs in Virginia, was killed in the House Committee today. Why? Negative fiscal impacts to school divisions, particularly ones with large student populations. It was killed as not fiscally sustainable. These words should be familiar to us, as Mrs. Manning pointed this out last week. So here's what ESL is in the 22-23 budget. An increase of 316 ESL students, an increase of 809 K for additional eight teachers, including extending current contracts to 10 months for additional planning, holding meetings, testing students, and completed administrative work for compliance. I think that's what the current teachers want that aren't ESL teachers. This is an increase of 46% from the 2021-22 budget. To balance this overall increase of new requirements, which included ESL, this ESL, Superintendent Spence reduced $2.4 million in non-personal funding requirements. What are those? Just as a footnote, in this estimate for needs, as of January 6th, there were 116 instructional vacancies, 307 non-instructional vacancies. Is this sustainable? As the House of Delicates just said, no. The increased ESL students will continue. I support the ESL program as I believe it is beneficial, but funding needs need to be addressed without impacting other students who this school board has responsibility. My final point is that the statements made by Ms. Rye, Ms. Melnick, and Superintendent Spence regarding Mrs. Manning's comments on ESL, your statements are taking her comments and politicizing these and falsely implying she's a racist. You did not make any statements concerning Ms. Holtz.
But I have to redirect it to the budget.
That is a budget thing, because she said it was regarding budget, okay? Mrs. Manning was first to publicly address the sustainability of funding, unsustainability of funding for ESL programs. These new ESL students could come from anywhere. Stop politicizing.
And that is time.
Get your financial house in order.
Our next speaker is Paula Chang.
Welcome.
Thank you. And remember, as I reminded you last time, and I think my husband almost needed our lawyers watching, I'm here also to speak on the budget, aware that the Virginia Legislature killed Senate Bill 156 because of the budgeting impacts upon the school systems, particularly the large ones. So we must find money from other places, and I'm going to go at this from a different standpoint, where everybody's looking at what's in the budget, what's not in the budget, I'm going to look at it. How do we sustain it when we have to find out where to get the money to pay for it? The average Virginia Beach salary is, for 73% of citizens, is $57,000 or lower. They're not one percenters who pay most of the taxes in this city. $57 doesn't go far with the current inflation, increased school budget and real estate assessment increases. We can't demand more from taxpayers, so where do we find this money? So I suggest to all of you that you look at Superintendent Spence and ask him to cut his bloated budget. Perhaps the extra funding for ESL and the teachers that is, for the funding that's desperately needed, could be found in that budget. For example, as I said, your average Virginia Beach salary is $57,000, but you all are planning on astroturf for two schools in the range of $37 million. That's equivalent to the annual $57,000 salary of 53 citizens. Also, we could cut the budget of the bloated administrative staff, which is heavy with VCPS one percenters, okay? They earn, and we could ask them to cut their own salaries by 10%, move money into certain places that where the money is needed. And if we can't cut it because of their, what shall I say, their, well, if they can't cut it, they can offer it, if you can't, because of their contracts. And so I'll give you some examples of people who could cut their budget that it is in with, within what you're giving here. For instance, $57,000 average budget for the citizens. Kip Rogers, Chief Academic Officer, who's responsible for the CRT and pornographic material that is presently in our schools, he makes $182,000, and he has almost $8,000 worth of expenses allowed to him. $57,000 average citizens. Dr. Parrott, Director of Equity Inclusion, who as school board members wrote the capitalism, or racism, I'm sorry, is from white Europeans, she earns $101,000 plus 13 in expenses. Dr. DiMartini, who told me last week he does not have enough respect from people, or the last time I was here, he makes $115,000. Dr. Robertson, $187. Natalie Allen, who seems to pick and choose as her job in communications, which school board member she supports and knows that she writes things that are not supportive, she makes $182,000. And Dr. Spence makes $272,000 plus $29,000 in expenses, but still needs his second job. I suggest you look at his bloated budget, and you find material and money that can come to your programs without further damaging the budgets of the citizens of this city.
Our next speaker is Barry Nolan. We'll move on to our next speaker is Annie Palumbo. Our next speaker will be Bonnie Cartwright. Our next speaker will be Kathleen Slindy.
Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, school board members, Dr. Spence and staff. My name is Kathleen Slindy, and I'm President of the Virginia Beach Education Association. My comments this evening are on the budget. Last week, I reminded you how far below the national average Virginia teachers are, and this week I want to emphasize that all the parts of the budget that increase income and additional resources for Virginia Beach City Public School employees are extremely important. Additional resources include, but are not limited to, additional school counselors and ESL teachers, resource materials for curriculum and technology, and training opportunities. It is also important that our budget addresses pay gaps on both the instructional and unified scale, and that it uses information from the comparison study of similar and neighboring districts as rationale to address the health benefits cost to employees, and proposes to decrease that cost. Many of these budget allocations may help to stem the flood of employees leaving the division, and others aim to attract new employees and substitutes, as we compete with surrounding areas for the limited number of qualified individuals. The asks if additional funding becomes available are to continue to adjust the unified and instructional step scales so that they are incentivizing for recruitment and retention, and to work to support those employees with heavy caseloads, who work with special needs students like the ESL, and special education teachers, the school counselors, and school nurses. Some of these essential workers were left out of the bonus pay. And finally, I want to affirm the values that VVA shares with VCPS that are reflected in these budget items. The VVA, like the school division, is committed to our community. The VVA recognizes and values the rich diversity of our city, and is proud to serve all children of Virginia Beach. The contributions of all our students elevate the learning that happens every day as we each, as we help each child reach their goals, academic and otherwise. This work reflects the values of our organization. We embrace the principles of equal opportunity, a just society, democracy, and partnerships. It is our mission to advocate for education professionals, unite our members to fulfill the promise of public education, and prepare every student to succeed in a diverse and independent world. We believe these values and principles align with the school division's mission statement, which reads, "The Virginia Beach City Public Schools, in partnership with the entire community, will empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community." This budget reflects many of our shared values and goals at a time when it is vitally important that the school division leadership, employees, and the entire school board embrace actions that support
30 seconds.
and that support an equitable, inclusive, and child-centered mission, and that we communicate this to our students, their families, the community, and employees. And we thank you for supporting and affirming this work through this budget. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Speaker number seven asked to be removed, so that is our last in-person speaker for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that brings us to our final agenda item of the evening, and it's a discussion on the school board workshop and capital improvement program. And with that, we welcome our Chief Financial Officer, Crystal Pate.
Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence. For this third budget workshop, we wanted to provide you with a general assembly summary update, provide you the basic focus of this budget, go over some information and clarification on topics that we have heard comments about during the public hearings. The House and Senate each passed their own budgets February 24th. The session adjourns on March 12th, and April 11th is the last day for governor's action on the legislation. The second and third bullets on this slide outlines the pay raises proposed by each chamber. The Senate version spends about $2.2 billion on 5% raises in each year for state and state-supported local employees, including teachers, plus 1,000 one-time bonuses. The House bill allocates about $1.7 billion for 4% raises each year, plus two 1% bonuses. Both chambers' plans include substantial deposits to the Virginia retirement system. The House does it in fiscal year 2022, and the Senate does it in fiscal year 2023. The House calls for $150 million for lab schools, and the Senate did not fund lab schools. Both chambers' plans provide extra funding for at-risk add-on program that sends money to districts with high percentages of students living in poverty. The House offers comparatively less than the Senate, matching the introduced budget by Governor Northam. Both chambers' plans provide decreases to state payments to divisions due to eliminating the state grocery tax, but holds divisions harmless for the elimination. Both House and Senate restore state funding of some school support positions. Both provide funding for reading specialists for every 550 students in K through 3. The House funds a full-time principal in every elementary school, and one assistant principal per 400 students. The Senate increases funded support positions, partially removing the support cap. Other Senate recommendations include funding to provide 5,000 recruitment incentives for teachers filling vacancies in hard-to-fill positions or hard-to-staff schools. Both chambers' plans provide some funding for school construction and modernization. The House establishes a construction loan rebate program, and the Senate concurs with what was originally introduced, which is one-time grants for non-recurring costs related to school construction, renovation, and other expenditures. And it also allows literary funds to be used for school construction loans or interest subsidies. So I'm going to switch gears a little bit. The next two slides, which you have seen before, demonstrate that the primary focus of this budget is for compensation for our employees through raises, reclassifications, increased allowances, and better health premiums. For fiscal year 2023, we estimated additional revenue from all sources to be approximately $47 million, as you see on the top line of this slide. On this next slide is all the compensation items we propose to be funded in the budget. This slide also totals about $47 million. The point here is we have taken all the additional revenue that we have estimated and dedicated it to compensation. And in this balancing slide, we also needed to cut about $8 million in the baseline to balance and fund some non-compensation items that needed to be funded. We just wanted to be sure that we made it clear that this was the direction we took, and that compensation was our focus. I'm now going to go over a couple of areas where we heard comments during our public hearings and thought it was important to provide information and clarification. The first topic relates to the idea of possibly using funding that's dedicated for the CIP program for compensation. So this slide shows the four major funding sources for CIP. The first is the city's borrowing authority, which includes charter bonds and public facility bonds. Issuing bonds results in incurring debt and is not an instrument to be used to fund ongoing compensation costs. It is not sustainable, and you do not want to take on debt service payments for compensation. Pago is money that is taken off the top of our revenue sharing formula to make an investment in CIP. This is not always a stable funding source, and usually only available when the money is there. There have been several years where pago did not exist, so it is not a reliable funding source to use for ongoing compensation costs. In addition, it typically runs on the lower end and is not sufficient to fund much in compensation. Energy performance contract funding is a measure to reduce energy costs. It is another form of financing which typically allows funding energy upgrades from cost reductions. The cost savings achieved from energy-saving initiatives is expected to exceed debt service costs from the issuance of public facility revenue bonds. Again, this is debt, and is not an instrument for compensation cost. And finally, reversion funding. You all are familiar with this term and funding source. Reversion funds are one-time money that varies year to year. As we have mentioned in the past, the city has provided us direction to use one-time reversion funding for CIP, and since it is one-time funds, it is not a funding source for use for ongoing compensation costs. The final topic I want to touch on to this evening based on is one of the administration, attendance, and health expenditure category. This slide shows the five expenditure categories outlined in state code. Most of them are pretty self-explanatory. We heard a comment on the administrative attendance and health category that it was a little over 5% of the operating budget at a budgeted amount of $45 million, which is administrators. So what makes up this category? There are administrative-type departments in this category like human resources, budget and finance, purchasing, legal, et cetera, which support the non-instructional activities related to the general leadership regulation and management of the school system. Activities include the policymaking functions of the school board and the general administrative supervision by the superintendent and his staff. But also in this category is attendance and health services. These activities assist students in adjusting to the social and learning environment of the classroom and maintaining physical and mental health. Services supported include health services such as nursing, psychological services, educational diagnostic services, and attendance services. The largest type of expenditure in this category is for personnel and benefits. Health services is the largest with 134.5 budgeted FTE positions and a total budget of approximately $9.1 million. Psychological services has 74 FTE positions and a total budget of approximately $7.3 million. Physical services provides bookkeeping and financial services, payroll, risk management, consolidated benefits, and purchasing. This cost center has 45 FTE positions and a budget of approximately $5.7 million. Human resources has 44.3 FTE positions and a budget of approximately $5.9 million. And the number of FTEs and related budget continues to decrease in the other cost centers within the category. So we wanted to provide you a breakdown of this classification, so you can see that it is not entirely administrative. The budget of approximately $45 million is spread over 14 cost centers, some administrative and some not. So that concludes the presentation for this evening. We'll be glad to take any questions.
We'll begin with Mrs. Weems.
Thank you. Thank you, Crystal. A couple of questions for the, okay, so the slide that has the total compensation in that graph, expenditures by major category. So instruction is a little over 73%, if we want to pull that slide up. And then administration, attendance, and health, which part of that would go into instruction?
Well, it's not classified as instruction.
Yeah, but I'm trying to just get the total compensation. I mean, the total amount of money that we spend on our employees is more than 78%, correct?
Oh, more than the 73.3.
I'm sorry, 73.3. It's closer to 78.
It's probably closer to 85.
Okay, well, that's what I thought. I thought it was always around 85%.
It is, for the total budget, the operating budget.
Okay. Okay, that's just one I wanted to point out, because even with the 73, part of it also would come out of the administration and attendance and health.
All of those.
And the other, so we spend about 85% of our budget on our employees.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And Mrs. Weems, in the estimate and needs book, if you look on page 26, it's a different graph. So this is by major category, which are the state categories for funding.
Right.
But on page 26, you see how that money is allocated, and you can see personnel services is 61%, French benefits is about 25%, and that's where you get the 85%.
Okay, great, okay. Because I just know that that's about every single budget, and people don't realize how much we spend. And so when you, when you take that 85% and what you have left over, I mean, obviously, you know, transportation, I mean, some things are just non-negotiable, so the negotiable stuff is about this big. Yeah, okay, just wanted to kind of highlight that. With the reclassification of teacher assistants on scale 10, can you just give me a ballpark figure about how much money we're talking about for just each individual, like, teacher assistant? I mean, if you can, like, how much more are they going to take home? Is there any kind of?
I don't have that figure. I mean, we can get it, but.
Okay, because we've, you know, we've been talking about teacher assistants forever and ever and ever, and so if you could just kind of give me that, how much we're talking about. And then also with the health insurance, can you just kind of, for our watching public, I know we've got, you know, just thousands of employees watching us today, can you just kind of explain the benefits, that part where we're really trying to improve the benefits, exactly what that would entail? Can you just go over that again?
Sure.
It's like the funding to improve the division's health insurance ranking, because we've all been talking about that for a long time, so I just kind of want to reemphasize that.
So we have been working with our third-party consultant, Mercer, to kind of have them go through our plan and see what it would require us to invest in order to reduce employee premiums for both active and retiree between the range of 40 and 50%. So that turned out to be about an $8.5 million investment, and so that's what we chose to do, to kind of give that back to our employees. Mercer is currently working on rates right now, because they have to take and spread that investment over different tiers over both plans. So we hope to get that shortly of what those rates will look like, but we are looking at a 40 to 50% reduction in the premiums for employees.
Okay, that's just fantastic. That's great. And once we get that right, if you can send that on, so we can spread the good news. The benefits is just huge, and it's just so crazy expensive. So, okay, thank you. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Franklin.
Thank you, Ms. Weems. That was actually a good question. So once we have that 45% reduction in the premiums, do we know where we will align then in terms of comparison for other school districts, divisions?
Mercer has, is planning on doing that based on looking at probably Chesapeake and Norfolk, just because those are our two biggest competitors and the ones, especially for the POS plan, it was putting us second, which is like in line with Norfolk and behind Chesapeake. Our high deductible requires a little bit more plan design changes based on the way that land is designed, so we're really, we have to coordinate that with the city. And so what changes, investments we were able to do for this coming up budget season probably only moves us up from like 7th to 6th, but the plan is to be looking at that over the summertime to try to look at those plan design changes and what we can do to actually move our ranking up in the high deductible.
Okay, and again, we talked about sustainability a lot, and this is something that we've determined is continually sustainable, right?
It is, and well, and it's an ongoing thing. I mean, this is a fluctuating type of thing, because people move between plans and employees pick different things. So it's an ongoing analysis that will have to be done, probably more than we've probably had to do in the past, because we always just, you know, did like a 3% increase in employer contribution and just went with that. So it is going to be an ongoing thing to maintain the sustainability.
Okay, thank you.
So Mrs. Weems has a follow-up?
Yes, I forgot to let my colleagues know. I know that I had mentioned that I really wanted us to look at budgeting for a recovery program, a recovery high school. After talking with Ms. Rye and Dr. Spence, we've kind of decided to present that at summer retreat, because that will give us more time for administration and staff and for me to work kind of behind the scenes and get our ducks in a row and present that. So that's why I haven't come out with anything today, so that will be an item for the retreat. And Ms. Rye, I think that was very appropriate, and thanks for the suggestion.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Kind of to piggyback off of Ms. Weems, we're both participating in the mental health task force, and we do anticipate some ideas and recommendations to be coming from that task force, and I'm just kind of curious what kind of wiggle room we have in our current budget to look at implementation, and obviously, we don't have those recommendations yet, so it's kind of a broad vague question. But are we expecting to build in or have any wiggle room for implementation of these recommendations this calendar, this fiscal year, or are we expecting that any recommendations would likely need to wait for the next fiscal year?
I would say that when these budgets are built, we do build in our reserves, so we try to stay within that 2%. We also, there's always things that change throughout the year and budget based on what we do. A lot of that, I can't give you a wiggle room number, and we'd have to look at your recommendations and just see where we are. Sometimes we look at mid-year, which we're getting ready to do now, and we look at mid-year and see what's been spent and what hasn't, and what we think is going to be come to fruition by the end of the year. Sometimes there is money that can be moved around, but it's kind of like, we just get your recommendations and try to work with that.
Thank you. I know that that was a vague question to ask without the actual recommendations, but just something that we want to keep in mind, that we, you know, started the task force, and we know it's coming, and so we want to be able to get some level of implementation moving once we get those recommendations. Thank you.
Colleagues, anything else? Do you have anything to add, Dr. Spence?
So then I will recap that this, these two budgets will be on next Tuesday's March 8th agenda as action items, right, two separate. Two separate action items, I believe we said?
That's correct.
So there'll be an opportunity there, too, for any additional information that there may be to present from Richmond, for example, or?
Yes, ma'am.
And your department is here, so.
Oh, and then I would be remiss.
With my, with thanks to my vice chair for me not overlooking.
So yes, kudos to the staff. They've worked really, really hard on this budget. We have people that do the personnel piece, which is mammoth undertaking. I will tell you to manage position management in this division.
Will you take a moment to mention them by name?
Sure. So, I mean, Budget Coordinator is Cassandra Armstrong. She handles our position management, and her sidekick is behind her, that's Irene. They work really hard on the position management piece. The other budget coordinator is Charity Zelmer. You've all seen her around. She does, she helps me a lot, and I usually ping on her quite a bit. And next to her is the budget analyst is Andrea. I can't, I always forget your last name, because you've changed it, Coretta. Thank you, because I know her maiden name. Then Cindy Gamble is another budget analyst, and she works really hard with our Department of Technology and our Transportation, our School Maintenance, and kind of works with those folks through the budget process. And then Mary Jane Spivey, she works with grants, all of our grants that we handle. Behind her is our, our Grants Manager is Jeff Ludwig, and he is our Grants Manager and also works on our federal and state grants. And they've done a fantastic job, and I really appreciate all the work.
I taught Mary Jane's son in first grade, and I'd like to think, I'd like to think that his math mind came from me, but I don't think that that is true.
All right, well, that's a nice way to end the evening, and we wish, we thank everybody again for joining us, and safe travels home. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Meeting adjourned.